February 11th, 2020 at 4:30 PM. Open this meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Byrne.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here.
Item number two is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Byrne.
I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agendas published. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Item number three is announcements. I have no announcements. Does anybody else have any announcements they'd like to make at this time? Okay. Item number four, consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Byrne.
I move that we approve the consent agenda for the mayor to sign and the clerk to attest.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. There are no items moved from the consent agenda, so we'll move right into item number six, A. A community presentation from the Ada County Highway District regarding the North Meridian Neighborhood Bike and Pedestrian Plan. And with that, I'll call up Edinson.
Edinson Bautista.
Okay, awesome. If you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Edinson Bautista. 3665 Adams Street, Ada County Highway District. Good afternoon, Mayor Simison and council members. My name is Edinson Bautista, ACHD Senior Transportation Planner and Project Manager for the North Meridian Neighborhood Plan. In today's meeting, I wanted to present the kickoff of the Neighborhood Bike and Pedestrian Plan project. The North Meridian Neighborhood Plan is the 13th of a series. The graph displays ACHD level completion for the neighborhood plans that have been adopted. The Eagle and VMP and White Water Park Neighborhood Plans were the last to be adopted on October 23rd of 2019. This graph reflects that once the neighborhood plans are adopted, there is an ongoing process of working the projects identifying into a plan. As of now, ACHD has completed 258 projects and 131 projects currently programmed in the Integrated Five-Year Work Plan. The North Meridian Planning Area is highlighted in this light. The light polygon delineated the planning area. The planned area is generally followed in the north by the Chindon Boulevard and Boise River, south by the Highway I-84, east following the city limits, and west Canadian Road and McDermott Road. The neighborhood plans aim to achieve the following objectives. Identify and maps the biking and walking destination as it pertains to the planning area. Through a robust public outreach process, identify the needs of connectivity, transit, biking, and walking facilities to gather a general consensus for community recommendations. Develop a user-friendly plan that communicates existing condition and needs, as well as convey proposals for projects to both the public and ACHD. Through analysis, technical review, and public outreach, define, prioritize, and rank projects that address the need identified. Additionally, we will identify existing gaps in sidewalk and bicycle network. We will identify existing gaps. Throughout this process, we aim to brand the neighborhood plans to ensure recognition throughout the community of these planning efforts and ACHD's continued commitment to bikes and pedestrian improvements. Through standard neighborhood plan procedures, public outreach is conducted in three different stages. Through student outreach, we work with students in the planning area to identify any concerns or recommendation they have regarding the routes to and from schools. We also hold a public open house. In this case, North Meridian will have two open houses to identify the general public needs and recommendations. Throughout the process, we also hold pop-up meetings to address any specific concerns of the public that comes out of the open houses. Our next steps include, from March to June, we will conduct public outreach and identify bike and pedestrian needs. On July, present to ACHD Commission and the city of Meridian the draft project list that comes out of that public outreach process. On August, a refinement of the plan report. And on September, present to the ACHD Commission for adoption hearing. With this, I conclude the presentation, and I will stand for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Thank you for presenting. I was curious if part of your outreach will include looping in our Transportation Commission.
Mayor Simison, council member. Yes, we have worked with Caleb to coordinate a presentation to the Meridian Transportation Committee.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So item seven, A, under Department Commission Reports, is Transportation Commission's Safety Bussing Discussion. And I think Caleb there from the side.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, I think a couple of pictures will help here. So the Meridian Transportation Commission meeting earlier this month, they made a recommendation to you all to recommend to the West Ada School Board safety bussing for kids on the west side of Eagle Road to get to Hillsdale Elementary. Here's the current walk zone for Hillsdale. So the park, I'll show you an aerial here in a second. So here's Hillsdale. This is Teconic Drive. This is a school speed zone. It's posted 45, but there are flashers. There's a crossing guard.
Yeah, I think you've got Tuscany up, not...
That's Sienna, huh?
Yep.
Sorry. Boy, they look real similar. There we go. Right there. Okay. Good call. Nothing else changes, though. So everyone over here is in the walk zone technically. But on Teconic, there's been construction going on with new subdivisions that are coming online. City has a well site here, and so the sidewalk is intermittently tore up, or it's construction zone. So the school district has been safety bussing these kids kind of on and off the last couple of years while construction's been going on. There's been some concern, not only from the administration of the elementary school, but also the YMCA, about the safety of traveling, biking, walking to those facilities from, again, neighborhoods on the west side of Eagle Road. So they are recommending to you, and this one's a little bit of a weird recommendation, in that it's to the school board that they consider continuing to safety bus. It's my understanding that here, even later this month, they're going to discontinue that because, again, the construction that was keeping children from walking to school. There's no gaps in the sidewalks, and again, it's signed and all the hardware are in place that would qualify this for a walk zone. But that is their request to you, that you petition, if you will, the school board. I don't know what that means, if that's a letter, if that's, I know you have a joint meeting with them Thursday, if that's a conversation. We didn't get into those details. But that is the recommendation from the Transportation Commission. Maybe just a little bit more background. The Transportation Commission actually met in January and heard from those folks. And then we have a subcommittee of the Transportation Commission that met before the full Transportation met two weeks ago. So it's been something that's been discussed, and it wasn't a unanimous vote by the Transportation Commission, but it was something that at the end of the day, they recommend you petition. So I don't know that I have much more to add, but I will stand for any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Not a question, maybe just a comment. And this was something that we discussed at the Transportation Commission a couple of months ago for council's benefit. Hillsdale Elementary School has the second highest amount of bussing of any of the other elementary schools in the district. And that, for me, that was a surprising statistic to learn because I remember when this project was first presented, the concept of the neighborhood and the school was to kind of be a school that serves the neighbors around there. But because of the way that the district boundaries are designed, you have as many kids that live in Century Farms neighborhood being bussed to other schools as you have kids who live outside of Century Farms that are being bussed in. For example, I think you guys all know I live on the corner of Victory and Meridian Road, right around there. And Hillsdale is our home elementary school, so it goes all the way to the Meridian Greens neighborhood. So it's a wide area. As I recall, and I haven't went back to look in the minutes, but I was under the understanding that when this project was developed, and even with the adjacent... Is that Reflection Ridge? Sorry, Caleb, that's that neighborhood on Teconic? Sky makes it, thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. That when those came on, there was discussion about safety bussing being provided to serve those neighbors until the district boundary was reallocated. So I'm one, I'm not supportive, I guess, it's not our call to make, but I'm not supportive of the district abandoning the safety bussing to have young elementary school kids having to cross at Eagle Road to be able to get to school. The issues related to the YMCA, I think, are also much larger and probably require more than just a letter from us. It's a collaborative solution between us, the YMCA, school board, and the Highway District because they've got a couple of access challenges, both with Amity and Eagle. So I'm supportive of us doing a letter. I know we're meeting with the school board on Thursday. I would hope that this is, we have an opportunity to discuss this issue. It's rare that you get an HOA, a parent-teacher group, and the administration all showing up at a Transportation Commission meeting at 4 o'clock in the afternoon saying, "We need help with this." But you had a bunch of stakeholders in lockstep on this, asking for help, not just with the safety bussing, but some other issues, but this is the first one that's before us. And so just some background knowledge for those of us that are new, and my feelings about where we need to go on this issue.
Caleb, a couple of quick questions for you. So Eagle Road at that area is an ACHD road, correct? So we at least have a willing partner to work with if there's other changes to that road. If we were sort of, because there's no school zone on that road, or is there? Does it slow to 20 in the mornings during crossing times?
Correct, yeah. That was this last year, they added that.
Okay.
The school zone flashers, and yes.
There's a hawk signal along with school zone flashers at Teconic, or no hawk signal?
No hawk signal. There is a crossing guard at the intersection of Eagle and Teconic. I'm not exactly sure where the signs and the flashers are on Eagle, but somewhere in this area. And then, as Councilman Cavanagh mentioned, there's also a school zone around the elementary. But this intersection has been improved, but there's not a hawk signal there currently. Now, that intersection will be rebuilt sometime in the near future. That developer, once they get to a certain threshold, is charged with rebuilding this intersection. And right now, it looks like it's going to be a roundabout. And at that time, they're going to put a crosswalk, striped crosswalk, probably on the south leg, I think is where it's going. So there are some more changes, some more improvements coming out there. But there were some recently put in, and that's why, from the school district's perspective, at least from their administration's perspective, this is, it checks all the boxes on being a safe route. All the sidewalks are in place, they've got all school zones, it's got all the bells and whistles that one would need. The thing that's a little bit different here is the speed and the context of that. It's not typical, maybe it's not atypical either, but 45, it was 50 or 55 just a year ago. So it's, people are used to going pretty fast on this roadway, and then all of a sudden down to 20. I'm not aware of any incidents out there, but that's a concern.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I think Caleb hits the nail right on the head, is that you've got high, people used to going to a high speed that have now been brought into a slow speed. And I think the reason there hasn't been any incidents is because we've got a program in place that's getting these kids to school safely that's quickly coming to an end. And I think it's all, the timing is very fitting for us to be able to advocate. And Caleb is correct. This checks all the boxes in terms of a form, but common sense would tell you we got to do something better than let first graders cross Eagle Road in the morning and after school. And for somebody who lives out in that area, in my opinion, the place where those signals pop up is too short of a distance. You know, by the time you see it, the time to react isn't enough. So I think there's further improvements that we could advocate with the Highway District, but at a minimum, keeping the bussing seems to make sense.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Caleb, since the school district is in support of this and recommending it, is there an assumption that they're willing to continue the service and the expenditure involved?
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Perrow, this is where it gets a little bit awkward. The administration of the elementary school would like to see the safety bussing continue. The administration headquarters checks all the boxes. So there's a principal at the elementary school, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, but their transportation coordinator is kind of on the fence. He's trying to kind of walk that line in between the administration of the school and the direction they've been given from the board and other staff there. So I think the request is from, as Councilman Cavanagh said, essentially the principal of the school, the HOA, the PTO, to continue safety bussing. And I honestly, I don't know that the decision's been made, but I've not heard that from the decision makers that this will remain safety bussing. I think they're trying to get over that hump, is what the...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
A procedural question. So if using, the district using their matrix objectively, this could warrant removal of safe bussing, is it their policy that it would be removed unless petitioned, identifying unusual circumstances for it to remain for a period of time? And are we then being asked by this collective group to be that petitioner to the district to collectively ask for that exception to the existing policy?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, that's a good question, and I didn't get into that too much with Ian Updike, who's my point of contact basically with the school district, about how that procedure really goes forward. And I'm, so I'm kind of under the impression, though, that there isn't a formalized process for that. It is sort of a petition, but doesn't have to be written. It can be somewhat verbal type of a thing. So I don't think there's any true outline of how this gets made. It can, it could be a letter or a request just made by the council, and that's enough to get them to change away from their policy. There may be a written policy on that. Well, I know there is a written policy on it. I don't know what a variance to that looks like or how to do that. But that's, I assume we're following that because, again, that's how it's been requested of us by the administration of the elementary school, as well as their transportation coordinator.
So counsel, if I may, just a couple of things I think to look at in this area long term. You all know how I feel about roundabouts. I'm not going to get on my soapbox about even a small roundabout at this location, which provides a great walking access point over potentially to the Y, the park, et cetera, from that standpoint. But regardless of what the boundaries may or may not be long term, I think there's a safe assumption that with the residential growth around Hillsdale, long term, this is not going to be a walk zone from this location. Eventually, I think that this area will probably be bussed to some other school as the area further develops. But from that standpoint, what do you think would be, if we're going to not ask the school district to maintain what they're currently doing, what do you think would be adequate safety standards? Is the school zone enough, from your perspective, to say that that would be safe enough if you don't want to see that continue? Or is there something else in this area that you think would make sense? Would it be a hawk? Would it be something else? Just food for thought, to put both sides into your minds.
So, Mr. Mayor, I know that was a question to the council, or at least something for the macho, but I do want to mention it. And again, Councilman Cavanagh brought it up. We will be bringing you the Transportation Commission's recommendation for priority projects. So I didn't get into it today, but there are some ancillary improvements that the Transportation Commission is going to, is currently ranking and will bring to you. I don't know where that's going to play out and if this is going to be number one priority or not to improve some of the crosswalks and other things in this area. But just wanted to let you know that's coming this next, first part of this next month.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
I agree. I attended a recent Transportation Commission meeting, and they were certainly working on trying to fix the pedestrian routes to school in this area and looking at the whole neighborhood, I think, for improvement. I just, I feel like there is a compelling public safety element to this that leads me to think we should encourage them to continue the bussing for safety reasons. Like the anecdotal, you know, information that I've heard is that it's just too unsafe to expect children to cross there. I don't know what kind of improvements would make me feel comfortable with them crossing. I haven't seen, I guess, enough evidence that there are other improvements that would get me there on it. My feeling is that long term, we want to encourage, to your point, the school district to look at their boundaries pretty hard and hopefully come up with a boundary that makes sense and a process for doing that. Maybe we could have that discussion with them. Start that discussion on Thursday. But I would be supportive of a letter from the city to support the safety bussing.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I guess then a procedural question for maybe Mr. Nary. I'd like us to discuss this with the school district on Thursday. I know we've got an agenda item that's labeled "growth." I don't know if this falls within that, or if we need to, you know, modify our agenda to list this item as a...
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Cavanagh, since they won't be aware you're going to bring it up, it probably would be wise to at least give them some advance notice that as part of your growth discussion, you want to talk about this specific item. So that way the trustees at least are prepared, so it's not a surprise. Otherwise, you really won't have a robust discussion.
Great. And, Mr. Mayor, maybe then in conjunction with that, as Councilman Hoagland and I were kind of talking about, we wouldn't want our kids crossing Eagle Road to get to school. A thought came to mind, which has been a big issue at a lot of our elementary schools, is if the safety bussing goes away, what you will see is the parents in this other neighborhood are just going to drive their kids over to the school. And we see this in elementaries in every neighborhood in Meridian, this parent caravan of cars that park on the public streets to drop off and pick up. And I know PD gets those lovely phone calls from neighbors and parents. So perhaps maybe that's another piece, either for this meeting or for a future meeting. We've got to come up with a collaborative solution to address that particular issue because that is impacting every corner of our community.
And just so, I am meeting with the superintendent tomorrow, that I can give them a heads up that this would be an item potentially for discussion. Okay. At this point in time, I'm hearing not necessarily a letter is necessary then? We just have a conversation?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
I think so. I think the discussion might flesh out what the letter could contain. Discussion on Thursday, and I think we all understand that they wouldn't eliminate safe bussing upon a belief that there's not any safety concern. I'm sure it's budgetary, and they're compressed in their bus funding in a million different areas. And so they create some policy that allows them to objectively eliminate it when certain criteria are met. So I wouldn't want them thinking that we're under some assumption that the removal of safe bussing is because they think that it's now safe and perfect. I'm sure they acknowledge that they're just trying to utilize limited resources in an efficient way, so it can probably, that'll help frame the discussion on Thursday somewhat.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
I agree that a letter would be appropriate, but also with Councilman Borton that we wait until we have that discussion before we really figure out what the content of that would be.
Okay. Seeing nothing else. Item seven, B, an update on Northwest Eighth Street travel and bike lane width. Mr. Hood.
The council. So ACHD is designing a maintenance project right now for construction in the summer of 2021. And it goes from Cherry Lane to Pine Avenue, so roughly a half mile. It's really broken into two different sections, though. This is Camelia right here, kind of mid-block. And the cross-section today, north, so adjacent to Meridian Middle. Let me just show you. I've got a picture that's... That's what it looks like next to the middle school. So you've got roughly, give or take, right, three and a half foot wide bike lanes. You do have a little bit of a gutter. 11 to 11 and a half foot travel lanes, and then about 10 and a half to... So that's the existing condition in this half mile that we're going to mainly focus in on today. The southern half of that, so from Camelia to Pine, I don't need to really talk. It's more of a standard cross-section. Instead of the center turn lane that you see here, there's on-street parking, and then the bike lanes, and then two travel lanes. So the width is roughly the same between the curbs, it's just a different cross-section. This is substandard. As you could imagine, about three, three and a half foot bike lane. Doesn't meet the ideal for a bike lane width, and ACHD has designed, their initial design is to go to a five-foot bike lane, five-foot, 10 and a half foot, and then a 10-foot center turn lane. So essentially, your curbs don't change after this project. They do want something in writing from the city, if possible, supporting that cross-section. I did take this topic to the Transportation Commission, again, the same meeting earlier this month. They were not supportive of the 10 and a half foot lanes. They wanted to see a six inches basically taken off of each of the bike lanes to make those four and a half feet and increase the travel lanes to 11-foot lanes. So that's their recommendation to you. Their main reason was the plan that ACHD has calls out this section of Eighth Street as a type-one facility. Don't need to get into all that, but basically, it's a shared facility, so you wouldn't even have bike lanes on it. Basically, it's, you ride in traffic, basically, because it's such low volumes and low speed. They have done, and I included this in your memo, I didn't include all the data tables. I have them, if you want to scroll through them with the speed analysis and numbers of bikes that were going on when they looked at that and cars parked. But basically, the 85th percentile, so the average speed that folks are driving this, and the volume, actually classify this as a Level 2, which means a dedicated bike lane here. So it's, and Justin's probably going to cringe. I don't want to say it's inconsistent with the Bike Ways Master Plan, but that data doesn't directly align with how they envision this street to really work. So that was the Transportation Commission's first thought, was, well, there shouldn't be bike lanes on this. Your plans don't call for bike lanes here. It shows it as a type-one facility or Level 1 facility. And then, and I'm just going to quote them, "They have a general disdain for lanes that narrow." So they're, and this wasn't everybody chiming in at the Transportation Commission, but the consensus was that's just too narrow of lanes. And so they recommended, again, that essentially six inches be taken off of each of the bike lanes and added to the travel lanes to make them 11 feet. They were okay with the 10-foot center turn lane, but they wanted the travel lanes to be at least 11 feet. After that meeting, I contacted the ACHD project manager and let him know, hey, they weren't real supportive at the Transportation Commission of your proposed cross-section. Shared some additional information with me that I didn't have. In fact, Councilwoman Strater, as she mentioned, was there and asked a question about the school district. The school district actually sent a letter in support of ACHD's cross-section. The commission did not have that in front of them. So I received that after the meeting, and then also received that data I was referring to. So about the speed limits and volumes on the roadway, and why they think it's appropriate now to actually strike back bike lanes after this maintenance project gets complete. So they didn't have that information that you do now. I talked to Mr. Lucas before the meeting. You know, again, the ACHD project manager would like a letter in support of the reduced travel lanes. Obviously, they get to decide. I think it's something that they factor in from the city. You know, it's our preference. We don't necessarily get to decide, though. So you could do everything from, you know, stay silent on this, to write a letter, to, you know, write a letter in support or against, or whatever you'd like to do. So I'm, it says, "Update on Northwest Eighth Street Travel and Bike Lane Width." So there's an update for you. If you would like me to do something more than an update, if you'd like me to take an action and write a letter for the mayor's signature stating one way or the other, I'm certainly willing to do that. Mr. Lucas, I know, is familiar with this, too, so if you have any questions, I'm hammer myself. Be happy to answer them, but that's essentially the question, if you will, before you.
Caleb, what is the urgency of action before the next Transportation Commission meeting if they were to be presented with the same information?
So, Mr. Mayor, it's... So, Mr. Mayor, it's, my understanding that Dave Rader, the PM, is, is planning to go to the ACHD Commission later this month. Could it be delayed? I don't, I don't know. Maybe. I didn't ask him that question. But he, that's why it's on this agenda, so he can take this information back to their commission in the near, near future. So he's, he's ready to go and report, hey, this is what we'd like to design and build with this project, and they want this piece of information. So I don't want to put Justin on the spot, but it sounds like he's prepared for that question. So I know.
Mr. Mayor.
If we could get Justin to...
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Give some feedback on, if he knows, the importance of today resolution versus three weeks from today.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Justin Lucas. I represent the Ada County Highway District. Business address is 3775 Adam Street in Garden City, Idaho. This has been kind of a fluid conversation. We've had input from the Transportation Commission. We've had input from the school district. We got letter, a letter recently from the CFROSA School Coordinator for the Treasure Valley area. Based on all of this input, what, and this is, I'm giving you information that Caleb did not have until I spoke with him today, we believe we have found a solution to this issue. We're gonna, there are bike lanes there now. We're going to keep the bike lanes there. They're going to be a little bit wider, and we're not going to narrow the lanes quite as much as we originally anticipated. So it's, it's kind of a compromise solution. It does not need to go back before the ACHD Commission, so they're not going to have to take an official action on this. Lane width, when you get within six inches, this is like striping error. You know, this, this is a truck that, that, you know, stripes these lanes down. And so we believe that, that we can make this work. The school district really wants those bike lanes there. We believe they're appropriate, and we believe we can make them a little bit wider without compromising those, the travel lane widths. So I apologize for not having all this information to Caleb. It's, we, as I say, some of these project issues, they escalate, then we get a bunch of information, then we kind of go, okay, what's the, what's the best way to approach this? And we believe we found a, a really good compromise that I think matches the, very closely to the Transportation Commission's recommendation of not, of not narrowing those lanes so much. There will not be a 10-foot travel lane on this section. If anything, the lowest we would go is 10 and a half feet, and that may just be for a very short period, short space within the, within the, this, this roadway cross-section, which isn't uncommon on a roadway like this. So I hope that answers the questions, and I'm glad to ask, answer any more questions you might have.
Any questions for Justin? Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions for Caleb? All right. Great. Moving on. Item 7C is under Community Development Fiscal Year 2020 Budget Amendment for the amount of $105,539 for a comprehensive associate coordinator planner position. Turn this over to Caleb.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's, it's really probably not a coincidence. The last couple of items really speak to this position that we're asking to fund this year. This, this budget amendment is for a new FTE that would largely coordinate issues like we've just been talking about with the school district and with ACHD and other transportation-related partners. I know you wouldn't be seeing me as much because there's someone else sitting here that would be on the Transportation Commission and facilitating that group. That's, that's a large piece of what this person would do, but it would be basically all things transportation and education. So this is a need that we have in, in the Planning Division of Community Development. It would be a, an FTE, again, that's largely charged with being a liaison, a touchpoint, to deal with some of the most pressing issues in our community. So this is a new position, and we don't have all the day-to-day stuff worked out, worked planned, but that's, there's a lot to do. And we'd also envision them helping just kind of as needed, but someone with a transportation background and a planning background is who would be the ideal candidate. So that is the request, is for that new FTE, and I would stand for any questions.
Are there any questions for Caleb on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
This is, if I'm correct, an acceleration of an existing plan for an existing position? Need a need, we're just trying to fast-track its filling in?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, yes, this is in our consolidated financial plan. I think it was 2022.
Is there any further conversation or discussion?
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Burton.
Caleb, would this, would this planner have other responsibilities, or would this planner be able to help with, you know, other associate planner needs that you are in need of right now in your department?
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Burton, it depends on the candidate. I don't see them probably, unless they walk on water, I don't see them being able to do plan review, help process development applications. But I do see them helping on some of the priority projects we discussed last month. So helping on some of the comp plan implementation stuff. So this, this person would be in the long-range side of the division, not on the current planning side. But if we got somebody with a background like that that could, and they will help assist, so they'll cover some of the transportation elements of what the current planners do, but they probably won't be writing staff reports and issuing permits and those types of things unless it's just somebody that, again, has this great background and some expertise in that. We don't plan on training them up too much to do that. So that's a different need. There's a need there as well, but that's not this position.
Mr. Mayor, follow-up?
Yes.
So Caleb, to, to help clarify, this is almost a position that would mirror like Brian McClure's position in a different way. Not, not same responsibilities, but same type of long-range type planning expertise.
Correct, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Burton. That's, it's on that side of the org chart, yes. So Brian and this position are the, the two in long-range. Different skill set than Mr. McClure, but yes, very similar. They would be sharing duties, covering for each other. Brian does transportation stuff, so, you know, he'd probably see a little relief that way, but this person, again, could make maps and graphics and those types of things. So yes, some overlap. That's, anyone on staff, that's probably your, your closest similar position.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
As the Planning Department liaison, I have reviewed the job description of this at length and very impressed with how detailed they've made it. And I see a lot of benefit as, as they've broken down the role. I see an enormous amount of benefit, especially to, I mean, this meeting is an example of where that, that liaison would have made a significant difference. I think we, we may not have even had to discuss these things as council if, if there had been a liaison that had already been, you know, helping with this process between the Planning Department and the Transportation Commission and ACHD. And so you and I had talked, Mr. Mayor, about the benefits that the different roles bring, new roles bring. And I think that it will, it will help us as council and other members of their department to indeed take things off of the plates of some of the other staff, as well as potentially, potentially ours. So as I've discussed this with them and what their, what their intention is with this role, I am in support of it as the liaison. So if there are no other questions, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the position for fiscal year 2020, a budget amendment for the amount of $105,539 for a comprehensive associate coordination planner position.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the budget amendment. Is there discussion on the motion? I will just add briefly, I, I think the, I know that there's a desire from council to get more information from the school district, to have a value add to our planning process. This is that, designed to be that role and that function, to provide that information, working with the school district to make sure we get that, that's important, so that not just in the long, in the immediate, but also the long range, you know, in terms of those planning components. And then I think that the community has stated that transportation and education are two of their biggest concerns through, I think, what those of us that were out knocking doors heavily this last year learned. So I think this goes right into the priorities of our community at this point in time. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
I just want to say, I think that's spot-on, and that this reflects a critical need in our community and a critical need within the Planning Department, and I'm supportive of it.
There's nothing further? Let's call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Kavner.
Aye.
Pearl.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
All eyes, the motion carries. Okay, item 7B, under Finance. Turn this over to Mr. Watts.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm here today to discuss the process of awarding procurement contracts and purchase orders. I have discussed this with me, my liaison previously, and here just seeking some direction from you. The current process outlined out in the purchasing, or the procurement policy requires a procurement manager to bring all contracts and purchase orders over $50,000 back to council for approval. This process, process is basically a duplicate of the budget process and the enhancements taking place for the, for the fiscal year budget. In an attempt to expedite the procurement process and to issue notices to proceed quicker and get our contracts out to the, to our contractors and vendors, I took a look at, at the requirement of the purchasing policy, tried to determine what value add we have of our current policy, and also the legality of what's required. I've worked with the city's legal department, as well as several other agencies, to discuss the legal requirements, as well as what the current process is with other folks. Found some key points. Council responsibility is for setting the budget for the city staff to execute. I discussed with the legal department, the legal requirements, and they've researched and determined there is no legal requirement for us to bring any contracts or POs back to council for approval. The procurement manager is responsible for issuing all solicitations, writing contracts and purchase orders, verifying budgets are in place prior to issuing contracts and POs, verifying that the contractors and vendors have the appropriate insurance, bonds, licenses to perform the work, and provide goods, and to verify that the contractors and consultants are registered with the state, Secretary of the State. So the process that procurement goes through essentially is vendor selection. Once council approves a budget, we, we work with the departments to determine their project needs. We issue solicitations for their projects and determine the lowest-cost vendors, or highest rank in the, in the instance of an RFP. At the conclusion of the solicitation process, procurement then issues a contract in a form that's been previously approved by the legal department. We have boilerplate contracts that we use, as well as purchase order forms, and issue the contracts, draft them, make sure all those documents are included, like I'd said before, and everything is met, and then we currently bring them to council for approval. As I previously stated, I also met with several other agencies. I, I met with the procurement manager of both the state procurement manager and Ada, City of Boise and Ada County as well. The results I got from them is that the state procurement manager, the state has no further requirements to award contracts. They don't go back to another governing body once the budget is set. The City of Boise, currently, they take only contracts above $200,000 to council for approval. They moved to this dollar amount a couple of years ago when we moved the threshold for the formal bid solicitation award. They moved to that dollar limit when we did that. So they did that a couple of years ago. They are considering going unlimited or approaching their council with that. And Ada County is currently looking at moving to the $200,000 limit, which matches the, the formal bid threshold as well. One of the key reasons, or some of the key reasons I've looked at trying to make a modification is to provide a quicker timeframe from bid opening to award of contract. On, on average, this will save somewhere between six and 19 days minimum, if everything lines out perfectly. That's the minimum time it takes to get something through council. It'll help projects actually get completed during the fiscal year. When we get down towards the end of the fiscal year, a couple of weeks, two, three, four weeks, on the front end of a project can be the difference of completing it during the fiscal year and moving it into the, the next fiscal year. That has been frustrating for project managers in the past. And it creates additional workload on the project managers because they have to carry those funds forward. It's additional work on their budget folks, as well as finance department's budget folks, because we're now carrying funds further that we wouldn't have to if we could complete those quicker. And also eliminate some overhead on our contractors and vendors. So when we award a contract, we open a bid, folks are there, our contractors and vendors, they're there to see the bid opening. Once they see the little bid, they do begin to gather equipment, personnel, and start assigning folks to those projects. If we take four, five, six weeks to award a contract, those guys are sitting idle, because they're not going to put them on another job and then pull them back off. So we're trying to keep their overhead down for a reason. If we can do that, when we, when we go out for our bids, they will not need to include standby time, because the agency takes a longer time to award contracts than could be. So we're, that's one of the benefits I'm hoping to, to gain from that is to address this with our contractors and vendors. Let them know that we'll be doing this in an expeditious manner, and they won't have folks sitting around waiting for us to approve contracts. And in the end, it'll allow the procurement division to provide better customer service with quicker turnaround times. With that, I'm just looking for direction on where you might, excuse me, where you might want to take this.
Thank you, Keith. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Thank you, Mr. Watts. I do have several questions. To me, this is, we have a high level of control and oversight right now, and I don't totally disagree that we could talk about what level of oversight is appropriate. Can you walk me through the other checks and balances that exist to make sure that, and I totally trust you, but if there's a new person running procurement, and that person has poor intentions or something goes wrong, what are the checks and balances that council would have to make sure that we don't have something go wrong and that we have a high level of oversight, especially on material contracts of a, a large dollar amount?
Internally, in the procurement division, we have two folks, Sandra Ramirez and myself. We double-check each other's works, and we, so we have, within our own, you know, our own guidelines, we double-check each other's work, make sure that there's nothing out of character or we've missed anything. As far as, if, if I were to leave office, you know, urgently or unexpectedly, I would imagine that council would want to put a stay on that process and implement a temporary process until either I returned or you were comfortable with the person that was in the procurement manager's position.
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up?
Yes.
One of the things I was struggling with a little bit, I think you did a great job outlining the procurement process, but as someone that's coming in that's new, what I struggled with is it was very lengthy, and I, I felt like I really wanted, like, an Excel spreadsheet, literally, that had, here's the process we have now, here are the exact changes I'm asking for, here is the rationale, you know, in, in like Excel, or, or even a red line to the existing procurement policy, so I could identify really quickly the exact changes that you were requesting. I, I guess I, I'm a little uncomfortable where some cities are moving, too, with an unlimited lack of council oversight over material procurement contracts. I, I view that oversight as an important check that we have in our municipal government. And I, I think I, personally, just speaking for myself, I would be open to a smaller dollar amount, perhaps, because of timing considerations and so forth, that, that could be approved without council. But I do think there is a, a certain level where it is appropriate for council to review, because the circumstances when we set the budget may change during the year, and they could change dramatically. And I, it just seems like something that is prudent management, to sort of have oversight on that, just speaking for myself. Thanks.
Mayor, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Strater, one of our main objectives during this process is we verify budget amounts before we even issue a solicitation. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't even issue a solicitation if there was not budget already approved at that time to go forward. So that is, that is a big part of this process. As far as dollar amounts proposed, what, what I am proposing is just moving to the $200,000. That's what we have in there currently for our proposal. I was just providing the unlimited, just for a range... I was just providing the unlimited just for a range to show you what other folks have done and are looking into. I'm not saying we're looking into doing that immediately. There are a few other options that, you know, could be included or incorporated into the process as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Maybe if you could elaborate on, let's say hypothetically, we were to go with this $200,000 threshold, would there be a process with at least the council liaison to continue to have some oversight over smaller contracts or some other, you know, type of mechanism where council could review these, the information would be available for council to continue to review and monitor?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, I do have a suggestion. I'll pass out a document here if you don't mind.
Mr. Mayor, that was me, Warren.
Yes, Warren.
I just wanted to take a moment, maybe as one of the customers of Keith's purchasing department, and say, you know, it's not often that we have an opportunity to sort of reduce the bureaucracy and streamline a process that can have an impact on us. And I know that there's a lot of contracts and one thing and another that are outside of public works, but we're probably one of the most significant customers. And I can tell you that we have a construction season during the summertime that our budget process doesn't necessarily align with because we close at the end of September and we're still in the heat of construction. And so every week counts when it comes to our ability to execute contracts, get these contractors in the field, and get them working during the short, limited timeframe that we have to do the work in the summer. So this type of an approach where we have already, you know, we've already come to the city council, we've asked for a specific project to be approved, a budget to be approved, you guys have had the oversight to determine whether or not that request makes sense, and then when we get to the point where it's like, okay, we're ready to hire the consultants and the contractors, as long as those are within those budgetary constraints that you guys have set, it makes it much more efficient and timely for us to be able to move forward with these projects and take advantage of that short window of construction that we really have. And so just wanted to share that with you from the public works perspective. These things actually do matter. The week or two, I mean, one week on a big project out at the wastewater treatment plant, we can spend a million dollars. And that's a million dollars that's either in the correct budget year or has to be carried forward into the next one. So it matters. So just something to think about.
Councilwoman Burn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that, that wise wisdom. I do have a question, and maybe just to refresh my memory and to help those who are new on this dais, explain the process in which, like, let's just say that you do have a budget that's been approved by council for X project in the amount of $450,000, especially in the current economic condition that we're in where it's tough to find contractors that, prices are always going up. I mean, what is $450,000 today may be $475 in three months. And so explain to us what would happen if you received bids back and it was over budget.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, anytime we have a request for a contract or a PO that is over budget, we put that on hold until the department can either come to council and request a overspend or, I mean, a budget amendment, or if they have savings in another area, we'll ask the department director if they have savings in another area where they could still award that contract, and maybe they're going to forego another project. So a lot of the wastewater and waterline projects, it's a big pool, and it's up to the engineering manager and the director to determine which projects we're going to approach that year. Anytime it's actually over a budget, it's on hold. We cannot legally, I cannot award a contract for a PO over the budget amount.
A dollar?
Huh?
If it's a dollar.
Correct. It doesn't matter if it's 10 cents. If it's over the budget amount, I cannot do that.
Mr. Mayor, follow-up?
Yes.
Keith, thank you for that. So let's just hypothetically say that Warren has this project that's going on and he's in charge of, and he has some extra money in their account that can be used toward maybe a different project that can be, like what you just explained. And let's just say that that's $15,000. Would you, at that point, come back to council and speak to us in regard to that, or since Warren has extra money in a budget or can steal from Peter to pay Paul to get his project done, do you still need our direction?
We don't come back to council for that direction, but only the department directors can authorize that, and that's ran through the finance department, through the finance director in the budget office as well. So everything has to align in order for that to happen.
Mr. Mayor.
Warren.
Thank you. So if those projects are in the same account code, that can occur, and that's kind of, maybe to clarify here, so when we do mainline extensions or mainline replacements, we may have a half a dozen projects, all of those projects end up under one account code under one budget. We don't know at the beginning of the year exactly, we have estimates of what those are going to cost, but some of them will bid a little high, some of them will bid a little low. We still can't go over the total that we ask you guys to approve for the budget process. We cannot go over that total without coming to you for a budget amendment. Now, if we have one project, which we don't even request them from you this way, but if we had one project that bid a little higher than our estimate and one project that bid a little lower, we can make those adjustments in the same account code. But the reality of it is that if they're not in a similar account code, we can't, even Dale has limited authority to do anything about that without coming to you. So really, when it comes to exceeding the overall budget, there's very little that we can do without getting some level of council approval for that.
Mr. Mayor, one more follow-up, and then I think Brad has some useful information he'd like to share.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
You know, I think this is a true testament to how this process has worked in the past. Honestly, Keith, you do a fantastic job, not only in our city but throughout the state. I mean, those who are new, you need to understand that Mr. Watts is at the forefront of almost every single procurement policy that is driven at the state level as well. So I think, and so with that said, I think it's just a true testament, we don't have to worry about it for the most part because you do such a phenomenal job and your team does such a phenomenal job, and the staff here at City Hall does a fantastic job as a whole. I do understand the concern that Councilwoman Schrader mentioned, you know, Keith Watts has a life, you know, you're not going to be here if you're not immortal. You know, there's going to be a time when you're going to retire and you're going to be gone, and so, you know, maybe that causes us pause to a certain degree. But just as long as, in my own personal opinion, I think I'm in favor of this procurement policy change with the $200,000 limit, and if it goes above that, or if there's a budget or a project that goes over budget, just as long as we're made aware, I think that you're not going to, in my opinion, I think I'm okay with that personally.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman. Councilman Hoagland.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Keith. I think Councilman Burn just touched on what I wanted to talk about, and that is a transparency component to it. I'm satisfied with our internal controls. I think Councilwoman Schrader, you know, brought up some good questions, and we have a process in place to protect it. We want to move it quickly. We don't need to do some of the things that we're doing now, but I'm trying to think of a way, and asking you for suggestions, how do we create transparency in the process that we can see something or citizens can see something, that things have been approved, and not that there's going to be any questions, but just so there's a way to have that open and available to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland. Currently, our bids are advertised in the newspaper, they're posted on our website, we hold public pre-bid meetings, public bid openings, and post the awards on our website as well. So there's that transparency currently. As you know, and as you know, we are currently moving to our online bid process, you know, our bid system, the electronic software that we had purchased last year, and everything will be real-time available to any citizen that wants to sign up and go on to our website and take a look at it. That information will be real-time.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Mr. Mayor, Keith, thank you for that, yeah. So once the bid is awarded, people can go in there, it sounds like that'll be up and running, and they can see what's been awarded. We can go in there, see, if there are questions, they can come to council or send us a note if someone's concerned about something, but it sounds like we will have that transparency available to us. So that's what I wanted to get at, make sure that it was available to everybody. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
Yes, I wanted to ask Councilwoman Schrader if she would clarify her thoughts on, you had suggested that a council member be involved, the council liaison be involved in that process. Can you expound on that, I guess?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thanks. Well, I should start by saying, it in no way reflects my level of trust for you. I have the utmost trust in you. I have the utmost trust in your department. I started my career at an investment bank that was robbed of several billion dollars by a rogue trader, so, you know, I come from a highly regulated industry where even small dollar amounts on a regular basis could cause a problem, and so I'm just, I'm trying to put myself in the mindset of how do we give you the ability to act quickly? Clearly, there's a need because of construction timelines and the weather and the timing of the year, but satisfy ourselves that we have sufficient oversight over this process because I do that as part of our job. So my thought was, you know, if there was complete transparency of information, as in I, Liz Schrader, could go online at any time and see all bids that were awarded, if they were changed, how much they were changed for, and ask questions about it, and if the council liaison was committed, you know, possibly to looking at these changes regularly and reviewing them with you to bring discrepancies to our attention, you know, then maybe I could get comfortable with some discretionary authority up to a certain dollar amount. And I realize that's a change from what you've proposed, so I apologize, but I am new and I am still learning the process, but I do feel uncomfortable without having those assurances.
Councilwoman Schrader, Mr. Mayor, currently, we are transparent as we can be. In public procurement, by law, no bids can ever be changed. You submit a bid at the due date and time, those bids are open, they're locked, they're sealed. No contractor or vendor has the opportunity to change a bid. They're opened in public, they're recorded in public, and they're posted publicly on our website. It's very transparent, nothing is behind closed doors. I'm not sure how more transparent we can get with that process.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Couple of suggestions or some thoughts as I've sat here listening to good banter back and forth by this body. Keith, if I understand correctly, we as this body will set a budget for a department based on enhancements that are presented by each director. That authorizes the dollars to be spent, which gives you as staff the ability to go out and handle the bid process and award the bid. With this new bid process, new bid software that I understand you guys are procuring, would allow a public-facing portal so that council or the public can see that process? Perhaps a further step forward could be, you know, on a monthly basis on our agenda, on the consent agenda, is a summary of dollars that have been allocated, expenses paid. I don't know if that would satisfy Councilmember Schrader's concerns, which is valid and appropriate, a further step forward to the public to say, not only do we talk about this during the budget process, not only is the bid process public and here's a spot where you can see it, but in addition to, that would be on each council agenda on a monthly basis, that this council would have the ability to review and approve and speak directly to the public, this is where we're headed. Everything, with the exception of that last piece that I proposed, we're already set up and able to do, correct?
That's it.
So, Mr. Mayor, I thought that I just, I'm supportive of what's being proposed with kind of the addendum of my soapbox in the last 45 seconds.
Councilman Mayor, I mean, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, one clarification, on a monthly basis, that report you would get, that wouldn't be for approval because then I'd be holding, it would be a report of the expenditures that we had authorized during that month.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Keith, correct. If I misspoke, to me, it would be, it's a summary. This is what you've done, and should a council member say, well, hmm, or a member of the public? And I think the other part that we haven't acknowledged is that, like, this is a competitive bidding community, and if one agent goes rogue and something's awarded, we're going to hear about that from the development community or from the bidding community about where they think something went awry. So that's another set of checks and balances from the public keeping an eye on the decision-making process.
And, yeah, I would ask Keith, more counsel, how often has one of these ever been pulled off and discussed in recent memory from an agenda?
Mr. Mayor, in my 14 years, I can't remember one, to be honest. In the policy, I will always have the authority, and I will use that authority to require something to come before council for whatever reason. Sometimes there might have been, there are times when we go with the second low bid, because the apparent low bid at bid opening does not have the correct license or documentation, so it'd be illegal for us to award to him. Even when I do that, so he's no longer the apparent low bidder, the second low bidder is really the apparent low bidder in that situation. Even when that's the case, I typically bring that before council anyway just because it wasn't perfectly smooth.
Yeah. Second question for you. In what process do we currently have that someone would know that if you put something on the agenda that it was a different amount, that they would know that?
When we bring something to the council, we include the bid results?
I understand, just looking for the, if someone was trying to be shady about this, I mean, would they have to fudge the bid number in the process that they're currently looking at? And that, even if someone was being shady, this, whatever changes you're talking about wouldn't satisfy that because it would still look on paper to be the same. You know, so I think that's where we get into our audits and our other financial controls from that standpoint, where you can truly see if there's a bad actor. And I think that that's key, is from that standpoint. But the other part of this is just, you know, the reality of the speed of doing business for a city or for anybody else, but whatever, you know, if you, short of Councilman Cavanagh's amendment, I mean, if we raised by $20,000, does that get people comfort? I mean, everything has a dollar threshold before where we currently are operating, where we're not being required to do these amendment controls. I don't, I'm not going to speak for the departments on, because I don't know which way I would prefer. I mean, does it create more work to create that or create more work to wait a week to come before council to get approval from that standpoint? So it's just wherever your threshold level is, if you say you need to down $25,000 from where Keith's suggesting to not do that, what would that be? Or does that not exist because of transparency in some other fashion that you don't think is being met? We do have Open Gov, which also will have all the spending aspects to this for the general public to get to, but I'm just trying to be realistic in terms of how do we move things forward? What is a realistic expectation for people to go and review contracts, review bids, follow the bouncing balls? Is council members, is that what you really want to do as your liaison assignment to the finance or the other department? If that's the case, yes, but let's not put in controls that you are not thinking is valuable for you and that you're not willing to follow from a, because then it just adds more work for the staff to do. And with that, I'll get off my soapbox.
Mr. Mayor, I would add that I ask those very questions of these other agencies. What's the difference between 100 and 200? What's the difference between 200 and 400? What's the difference between 200 and 400? Those procurements, they're all handled exactly the same way. Nobody had an answer for what the difference is, because there really, truly is no difference. Our process is the same for all of those procurements. And I did want to make one more clarification with Mr. Cavanagh. When the budget is set, purchasing doesn't get that budget to utilize. The directors have the authority to manage their budgets. We don't manage their budgets, so that's why we do, as the director and their team request. We are a customer service division. We execute the budget that the directors and their departments request of us. I just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
I am comfortable that, you know, in any kind of enterprise, at some point, you have to have a certain level of authority. I like Councilmember Cavanagh's thought process on receiving some type of a report at the end of the month, a summary report, if you will, that has the pertinent information that we would need to review, so that if we had a question, we could follow up. You know, trust is given, and then trust can be taken away if we feel like some expectation is not being met. And I certainly, you know, again, I very much trust your department. I'm just trying to think about, what is a check and a balance here, so that in the future, if you're not the person in that seat, and that person is a different person, and the level of trust is different, you know, we're looking at that as we should. So I would be comfortable with that change. Perhaps we want to discuss the amount as well. $200,000 for Boise. Boise is a city of a different size, and we are, although we're growing quite fast. I'd like to hear my other council members' opinion on what a material threshold is.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Just maybe some summary of everything that I've heard. I think the level of detail and focus that Councilwoman Strater's emphasizing is what every one of us should always have, and everyone that follows us should have, in the desire to make sure that every T is crossed and everything is done appropriately. And it's always a good question to ask, even if it grinds, let's grind, because that's our primary responsibility. I think Councilman Hoagland's comment about transparency is spot-on, and we've talked about it back with OpenGov as functional transparency. You know, it's all public record, but can we do it in a way that makes it functional and easy for not only us, but anybody who attends our council meetings? And I think Councilman Cavanagh's suggestion about maybe a monthly standing agenda item that simply lists the vendor and the contract amount, that may spark a question from the public when they see it, or this one of us, and maybe not, and that's fine, but at least it's an additional simple level of making everybody aware. I'm comfortable with the adjusted threshold amount. I think it fits the explanation that you've provided. You got to draw a line somewhere, and I think that explanation you've provided and other communities have used makes sense as well. I think a takeaway, if we approve the adjusted policy limits today, I think it would also be helpful for finance and the liaison to work with, what does that report look like? What do we do? Is it, you know, a monthly vendor and contract amount? What type of functional transparency can we provide to all of us? And then bring that back with, here's what we've come up with, that might fit what all of council has described being a concern of making it easy to be aware of how these contracts are going. I'm supportive of it, and I think the explanation that everyone's provided is going to make this process better.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Burt.
As I was going back and forth up here in the dais, I was trying to think back in our conversation, Keith, about the fail-safe that we were talking about, because you and I were discussing in between talking about the car that your dad was going to buy, but we were talking about, like, I was struggling with it, just like everyone else and all the other council members that you spoke with. But the very end, the fail-safe was the dollar amount that would be added to a list, maybe on the consent agenda, of all of the things that you spent that was above, I think the mark was like $50,000 or something like that, that we could, and whether that's on consent, or whether that's an email, that is what made it comfortable for me. And so, thank you, Luke, that's exactly, I was trying to remember what to Brad, I'm like, I heard it from somewhere. So, it's perfect.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Where do we go from here? What are?
I have no idea.
Keith, what are you looking for?
You need to come back with revisions to what you're proposing, because it is listed as an action item.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, I'm good with the change to the $200,000. I can work with my liaison to determine the look of the report and the content of that report. Unless you want that report somehow to be listed in the policy, I wouldn't think so. I think that's just a process that we'll go through. But I'm good with moving it to the $200,000 and then work with my liaison to provide the report that you guys will all discuss and agree upon.
Mr. Burt.
Mr. Neri.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Keith, it sounds to me, so we have a report each week before payments are made that are listed on the consent agenda, that lists every single request for payment, from ones as low as $9 up to $5,800 in varieties of that. So it sounds to me, council, that's basically what you're asking for, for these types of procurements, at a certain dollar level, the difference would be is they would be after the fact. It's really just a report rather than an approval. Is that right? So the formats that you have here may be a good starting point for what you're talking about.
Mr. Mayor, or, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Neri, what I envision actually with that report, we open bids all week long. I would think a weekly basis rather than a monthly basis. And anything that we open prior to the deadline to submitting for the council agenda, I would put those items on that list. So most likely, more likely than not, you'll get to see those amounts before those contracts are actually awarded, but you'll have the information as soon as we can. I don't want to, that is to not delay my process any further. So I think we're going to be gathering that information anyway. I would think that would be a weekly report, just like, it would mimic the finance report. There's a statute requirement on the AP side. There is no statute requirement. This is just to satisfy your desire to have additional knowledge. But I would think we would do that as we open bids on a weekly basis, and provide that information to council on a weekly basis.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
With that, I think I'm comfortable, and I'll make a motion that we approve the revised procurement policy, recognizing that staff will work, I guess with me, with the liaison, to come up with a bid summary that would be provided to council on the consent agenda on a, as, on a regular basis. Thank you, Councilmember Hoagland.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Now, all those in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Great work, Keith. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Item 7E is a public works for budget amendment of $58,000, $0.008 for water operator one. I'll turn this over to Ms. McVeigh.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Thanks for giving me just a couple minutes of your evening to discuss our budget amendment. This is for a utility locating position, which is called a water operator one. So in this presentation, I'll give you a quick overview of how and why we do utility locating, how many locates we do, and why this amendment is in front of you tonight. So it's a state requirement for utility companies to locate their underground utilities anytime someone calls dig line. So these calls can come from anyone who plans to do underground work in a street or right-of-way, so a citizen or a contractor. Dig line then dispatches a locate ticket to all underground utility owners, and we're required by law to respond and mark out our utilities. This is a really important activity from a liability standpoint, because it can cause significant issues if our lines are hit. And then additionally, if the locate is either not done or done incorrectly, that liability and cost falls back onto the city. So the city has historically been locating its water sewer and reclaimed water lines, and we get about 800 locate calls each month. This locating activity is currently done by two water division employees. So what's changed, in 2018, the city became aware that it would also need to locate the electrical utilities that are attached to city-owned streetlights. So this was previously not occurring and represented a potential liability to the city. So knowing that the city didn't immediately have resources to do these extra locating, we began contracting out this work with the promise to reevaluate this strategy once we had additional information. So we currently have about 7,900 city-owned streetlights, and this number is projected to grow to nearly 30,000 at full city build-out. So this is a program that's only going to continue to increase. For FY '20, we budgeted almost $100,000 to cover the cost of this contracted electrical utility locating, which is made up of two primary components that you see. So the dig line dispatch ticket costs, and then also the contracted locating labor. So when we took a look at these contracted costs and compared them to the cost of bringing in another in-house utility locator, we realized the cost savings to the city would occur if we brought this work in-house. And then as the city continues to grow, and as these locate tickets continue to grow, that cost savings just continues to grow as well to the city. So the big cost savings comes from the fact that we would just receive one dig line ticket rather than the two that are required today under this contract operating scenario, as well as the savings on the labor of not having to hire a contract locator to go out and locate the streetlights. So this budget amendment total cost also includes the necessary equipment and training for the two existing locators to get them up to speed to be able to locate the electrical utilities as well. So in summary, it's the department's recommendation and request that you approve the budget amendment for the locating FTE, which would allow the city to bring streetlight locating entirely in-house. This amendment has a less-than-one-year payback for the city and results in a net, almost nearly net-neutral budget amendment due to the cost savings from the dig line tickets and then the contracted labor that we won't be spending this year. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Laura, thanks for coming before us, and I love that when a question pops in my head, you kind of immediately start to almost answer. It's really good. But my question is about the savings analysis that you provided to us in the memo, and it's very appealing, but it also looks kind of deceptively low. And so I'm curious, does the total annual expenses include the need for either office space or a vehicle for the employee? I see the annual operation expenses of $10,000 at the start. Typically, when we see a new vehicle, it's much higher, so I'm just trying to figure out where those things are coming from, and if that's something that's included for this position.
Councilman Cavanagh, great question. So this position does not include a vehicle. We were able to actually relocate and shift some vehicles around and do some vehicle sharing in positions that utilize vehicles less frequently. This position obviously needs a vehicle full-time, so we reallocated one of those vehicles to this position, and so we are not requesting a new vehicle with this budget amendment.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
But will come a time where that vehicle will need to be replaced, I assume, in a year, or two years, three years, four years?
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, another good question. So, not that we foresee at this point, so we were able to look at positions that don't necessarily utilize vehicles full-time. So some of our administrative positions are instrument tech positions that can share vehicles because they're not driving around full-time all day. So we don't anticipate the need to come back at a later time and ask you for another vehicle.
I guess I would add, eventually, the vehicle you have would be replaced one way or the other from whatever use would entail in any capacity. This may expedite that in some fashion.
And, Mr. Mayor, the reason why I ask is, you know, I take that total annual expense pretty seriously, and I know that you do too. And I think the six years that I've been here, I have had enough budget enhancements come before us where there's a vehicle replacement that was utilized from another department, and now that department has another vehicle that is set for replacement. And when I'm looking at the total annual expense, factoring that cost in too, to me, at least at a gut level, based on your presentation here tonight and the memo you provided us, there isn't as much cost savings as initially presented, and it does make me take pause about, I think where you're wanting to go is appropriate. I guess I'm just, I'm curious if now is actually the right time. I trust you as staff to say it is, but I just think it's important that we look at this and seeing what the real cost is to the city, to our ratepayers, before we make that decision.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
I just wanted to point out, I believe that that vehicle expense could be quantified in a fairly straightforward manner, and if you amortize even the full expense of a new vehicle over an average life of, you tell me, what, five years? I boast for like a $50,000 vehicle, maybe adds another $10,000 expense, and then maybe some fuel for the full year. I think just making a comparison, and maybe you could elaborate a little bit on what that vehicle cost might be, it still looks like a net savings to the city from just a back-of-the-envelope perspective, and I'm hoping you could just elaborate. I feel comfortable that, from a common sense perspective, it looks like we'd save money.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater, your points are absolutely correct. So even, we did run this analysis with a vehicle loaded in, and there is still cost savings. We were just able to offset that at this point with, I guess, shifting some of those vehicles around from positions that don't necessarily utilize a full-time vehicle.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Laura, is this a mission critical? We need to get this person hired right now? If we were to continue this two weeks, you could give me that extra analysis. Again, maybe I'm the, and if I'm the only one that has those concerns, let's move forward. I don't want to slow the train down, but when you see an annual net benefit of $70,000 over 10 years, and I think in that 10-year period, we might buy two trucks that... Per year?
Yes.
Much different. That's my inability to read the report the correct way.
Any further, any further questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
With all due respect, because I think it's good to do the analysis on the vehicle, but it feels like, from looking at this, the annual net benefit is very significant, I move that we approve item 7E, fiscal year 2020 budget amendment in the amount of $58,008 for water operator one.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, the court will call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Perot.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Burt.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. Thank you. Item eight.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
I move we move into executive session per Idaho State Code 74-2061C.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move into executive session. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, the court will call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Perot.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Burt.
Aye.
All ayes.